The August 9, 2022, meeting of a work session of the McMinnville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and we'll call on our Public Works Director, Anne Pagano, to introduce our topic of Mercury Total Maximum Daily Load Plan and Implementation Discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Drabkin, and members of the council. Thanks for the opportunity to present this information to you about the Total Maximum Daily Load Plan, and we're going to call it the TMDL to be short, that we're working on as a requirement of the State of Oregon's Department of Environmental Quality, which is DEQ for short. I'll refer you to the packet for the staff report, which includes the action letter from DEQ, the draft TMDL plan, which is in draft form, I will remind, because there are still some typos that we're working on, and we'll be reviewing that one last time before it's finalized. Also, the slides that our consultant, Elizabeth Sagmiller, will be presenting are also in the packet. In March of 2021, the City of McMinnville received notification that the city had been listed as a designated management agency, which is also DMA, by DEQ in accordance with the 2019 final revised Willamette Basin TMDL for Mercury. TMDL implementation is required through the Federal Clean Water Act and the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. As a DMA, the City of McMinnville is required to develop and execute a TMDL implementation plan according to state regulations that lay out specific measures for municipalities. These measures are established to address McMinnville's contributions of runoff to local waterways, including the South Yamhill River. The overall goal of the program is to reduce mercury and stormwater runoff to waterways. The city's Public Works Department has taken the lead on this project, and a draft TMDL implementation plan has been developed by ENS, which is Elizabeth, who has been assisting the city with the plan since last fall. And, as I said, the draft plan is included in your packet and is also on the city's website for public comment and questions. Please note, this is the first step in a long journey, and we have a lot more work to do over the next months and years. We have actually five years to implement this plan, so this is just kind of the beginning. And Elizabeth will now provide a presentation about the requirements of the plan and the steps moving forward.
Thanks, Anne. Hello, everyone, mayor, city council members. Just by way of background, I have been in local government for about 20 years in the state of Oregon in the environmental field and stormwater management. And I retired, and then DEQ issued this new TMDL, and I came back to work. And so I'm working for smaller, midsize agencies in Yamhill County and in Polk County. There's a lot of confusion around this rather arduous program. So I know you'll have lots of questions, but I'm going to give you some basics. TMDL, and I define it later, but I'm going to do it again, because you're not going to hear me say total maximum daily load every time. So a TMDL is the amount of a pollutant that a waterway can receive and still meet water quality standards. In this case, the Willamette River has too much mercury, and so as a process, DEQ has expanded its reach and is starting to include other smaller agencies in TMDL regulations. So as Anne said, this is a new program for the City of McMinnville. The 2019 final revised Willamette Basin Mercury TMDL and Water Quality Management Plan is what we're addressing. And as Anne said again, the City of McMinnville is a designated management agency. So you have, you do stormwater management currently within the city, but you're going to elevate that quite a bit over the next five years. So this is just legal stuff out of the regulations. And I think the most important part of this, well, there's a couple of things. One, as you talk to your constituents and whatnot, remember that this is grounded in the Clean Water Act, the Federal Clean Water Act, and DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, in this case, is the agent for the EPA in Oregon. So we talk about DEQ a lot and not so much about the EPA, because we're basically answering to both. So I'll address this later, but what happens if you just don't do it? Well, there's pretty hefty fines in place. And I provided Anne some references today, or for some locations of that material in the Oregon Administrative Rules, if you care to look. So stormwater, just as a reminder, I mean, this is a very cool field to me, but it's probably horribly boring to others. Stormwater is precipitation, basically. And if you think about the urban landscape and all the places that prevent water from soaking in, what runs off and enters your system or runs directly to the waterway is stormwater and all that it carries with it. Keep in mind that in most municipalities, stormwater is not treated. So what it picks up on its way to the waterway is what is discharged to the waterway. There is pretreatment in place in the way of water quality manholes and bioswales and some rain gardens, things like that. And they do help. And we'll talk about your requirements for that as we go along. But this is why these regulations are in place. And if you want horror stories about what you find in the catch basin, I'm good for those as well. So again, a TMDL describes the amount of a pollutant that a waterway can receive. The waterway needs to be safe for recreation, safe for fish rearing, drinking water, and fish consumption. In this case, mercury is stored in the fat tissue of fish, and you can look online and see what the fish consumption regulations are in Oregon, but it covers warm water species and cold water species as well. The TMDL implementation plan sets out mandatory activities that you're going to take over a five-year plan. And this document that was in your packet, the matrix, which is Attachment A, spells out what you're going to do and when you're going to do it by. This is the document that DEQ really digs into. So what does it mean for McMinnville? We talked about some of this. New activities for how the city's maintained, just tightening things up a bit. You'll see some new ordinances, primarily for construction site activities, but also for illicit discharges. I'll talk about that as we go into this. And also, your design standards will likely have to be revised. You'll see a lot more community education and engagement, and then a focus on water quality. And we all tend to think of water quality as being what comes out of the faucet. And in this case, every time I say water quality, it means what's in the So this list of six minimum control measures, I think we just call them control measures now, was originally developed by the EPA. And they were basically put in place to say, if you do your best to address the pollutants in each one of these categories, you should be able to reduce your contribution of pollutants to waterways. And I'll explain what these are. So public education is just what it says. The key to this, though, is focusing on what we call target audiences. So you're not just blanketing the community with stuff they may not read. You might be targeting businesses or landscapers or the construction building community with messages that make sense to them, students, little and big, both. And you need to annually evaluate your education program and keep really tight records on it. This is the fun part of the program, getting the kids involved is a lot of fun. Public involvement is basically educating, or I'm sorry, allowing members of your community to have a voice in your program. And so anything that includes volunteers is a public involvement activity. Talking to the city council is a public involvement activity. Having the TMDL implementation on the website and allowing people to comment on it is a public involvement Illicit discharge detection and elimination. In a nutshell, this just is a way of making the city accountable for what goes down, any structure that's on the street that would go into the stormwater system. This picture looks a little bit like maybe there was a car wash or something in some foam, might have been washed into this drain. That would be an illicit discharge. Dumping paint, washing your paintbrushes, washing your lawnmower. If you're a construction, if you're building a house and you put your honey bucket on the street, that could be an illicit discharge. Anything that leaves the site that enters into your stormwater system is an illicit discharge. This is a very big one. You'll develop a procedure to respond to all violations, document all complaints and responses, and that gets reported to DEQ every year. I think that in my experience, people tend to see that grate on the street, and they don't consider where it's going, or they think that it's a sewer, as in wastewater, and going to be treated. So it's not an issue, which is why we mark catch basins. But people, a lot of times, really use it as a disposal. And so this program helps alleviate that. Construction site runoff erosion control is the heart of your TMDL program at this point, because mercury is a heavy metal that binds to soil particles and enters the waterways. So the picture at the top of the screen, that's a pretty good construction site, except for the oil sheen on the street. But I see a lot of good things. You notice that the honey bucket is off the street, and all the stockpiling is off the street, and they've done a good job. The one at the bottom is maybe near the golf course. And I just put that up there. I don't know what was going on, but you should never see bare dirt that's able to move, regardless of where the stream is. So talk about post-construction a little bit in new and redevelopment. This one is confusing. You're doing some of this in McMinnville. And what a post-construction facility consists of is a soil medium and plants that are intended to remove pollutants from water that enters the facility. There are things like water quality manholes that you can use in a pinch, but basically DEQ is saying, install these green features. Examples are bioswales, infiltration trenches, rain gardens, vegetated stormwater facilities. Oftentimes, these are designed with a rock gallery below them so that if they're capturing floodwater, the water can settle out and hold until it percolates in. Soil does quite a good job of cleaning pollutants. Good housekeeping and municipal operations is basically telling the city to make sure it keeps its own house clean, as an example, for its residents. You have a good housekeeping program. You clean catch basins, you sweep streets, you have a fall leaf program, lot of good things in place. Again, this is one of those ones that just kind of needs to be tightened up a little bit. So some of the other kind of regulatory requirements, this is just a lot of words, but I want you to be aware that it's not just following the checkboxes. You do need to meet the annual goals and put them in a report that's submitted to DEQ on December 1 of each year that covers your activities for the year. All components of the plan must be completed by 2027. And in 2027, the city needs to do a review and an update of the plan, and then prepare it for implementation for the next five-year period. So I pop this in here, because these are questions that I've heard a lot over the years. Who's regulated under the TMDL program? Well, cities, under this particular plan, cities with less than 5,000 people are going to have to do the same thing that McMinnville does, but they have a much longer period of time to do it. Cities with populations between 5,000, let me go back. So smaller cities, I mean, like Dayton and Amity and Willamina, little tiny cities. I don't know if anybody knows where Falls City is in Polk County. They have to have a TMDL implementation plan. The populations between 5,000 and 10,000 people, they had to do a little bit more than those smaller folks. For McMinnville and populations over 10,000, what DEQ is asking you to do is basically develop a program that is equal in nature to the same type of permit that the City of Albany, the City of Corvallis, the City of Springfield, the City of Kaiser have, who have bigger populations. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah, I can hear you.
There we go.
They're just showing off.
So I just want to make it clear that what DEQ is putting a lot of effort into at this stage of the game is aligning, I can't talk without moving my hand, sorry, is aligning its regulatory stormwater programs so that everybody has the same regulations. They're just more prescriptive for some than others. Where does mercury come from? Comes from the air. We know this. Comes from outside of Oregon. But it is deposited on our water and our land, which is why erosion is the main culprit for mercury in waterways. So what happens if we just don't comply? And I said fines. Anne said that Anne has those resources to provide to you if you'd like. But just to start out, what you would basically be doing if you didn't comply is you'd be violating the Clean Water Act, and you could be fined starting at $25,000 a day. It depends on who the enforcement person is, but they have a model that they use for calculation, so it is real. Do these requirements ever go away? Well, we don't really know, but probably not in our lifetime. Some of us have less years. But what DEQ has determined is that there needs to be a 75% reduction in mercury from TMDL agencies in order to make fish safe to eat from the Willamette again. Is there good news? I think so. You know, cities that have environmental programs tend to be cleaner. Their waterways are cleaner. They're safer. And property values are higher. These are the types of communities that people want to live in. And this is right up your alley. I see this as being a good thing for McMinnville. Next steps, we'll submit the final TMDL to DEQ by September 3. You'll have to adopt the plan by the end of this calendar year. Put together a work plan for the first year. Work with legal to talk about ordinances. And that's, let me just really quickly say that ordinances are very rarely developed from scratch. It's always something that agencies go out and mine from other communities, tailor it to make it your own. Implement the measures in Appendix A, the matrix, record-keeping, record-keeping, record-keeping. DEQ can audit you at any time they choose. And the first annual report will go to DEQ no later than September 30 of 2023. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you very much. We'll open it up to the council for questions. I'll start down at this end. Counselor Genowith?
First, I want to say thank you for the presentation, and thank you, Anne, for returning my call. I did get ahold of somebody at DEQ to get some of my questions answered. I'm a little confused. Now, let me start out by saying, I am totally in favor of getting mercury out of our water, and I'm totally in favor of having fish that I catch out of the Willamette be ones that I can eat safely. So my questions are not predicated on a desire not to do this. So let me just say that first. But I am a little confused, because you say that we would be in violation of the Clean Water Act, which was passed in 1972. I'm having a hard time making the leap from how this whole requirement that's just now being put on us in the last six months to a year has anything to do with a bill that was passed in 1972. So that's part A of my question.
Okay.
Part B of my question is, was the implementation of this, if it is in fact connected to the Clean Water Act, was the implementation of this directed by the legislature, or was this a DEQ rule that determined that we were going to be doing this? So if you can answer those two, and then I can go with more questions I have following those.
Okay. I'm going to answer the second part first, which is, I don't know. I should know that after all these years, but I don't. So we'll get back to you on that, though. And so let me move through the Clean Water Act, and if dates are a little skewed, forgive me. Yes, the Clean Water Act was put in place as a result of the hazardous waterways we had in the United States at that time. And so what we were looking at is end-of-pipe and discharges from industry and large urban areas. And that's how Phase 1 permits and industrial permits came out of the Clean Water Act. Well, as time went on, good work had been done, more needed to be done, and so Phase 2 was added in, or the Clean Water Act was amended, and the Phase 2 provisions were added. And for the city, or for Oregon, Phase 1, Portland, Salem, Eugene. Phase 2, again, Corvallis, Albany, Kaiser, those kind of folks. And then they said, okay, we have been regulating end-of-pipe, but what about overland flow? And that's what TMDL applies to. To go a little further, and I don't know when the original TMDL was submitted to EPA from DEQ, but it was approved by the
So it sounds to me like where you're going with this, I'm going to try to, for my fellow counselors to have more time, it sounds to me like where you're going with this is that it set, that the Clean Water Act set in motion rulemaking capability at the EPA and then downstream, so to speak, pardon the pun, to DEQ, and that likely what we're going to find the answer to this question is this is actually a DEQ rule that is following under the auspices of the Clean Water Act and the EPA with the EPA's approval once the DEQ put that rule before them. Is that where we're going with this?
Right.
Okay.
You've got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
No worries. So to be clear on the reason why I'm asking these questions, I have, and I credit Sal, although he probably wouldn't want me to apply it here. But Sal has brought to the attention in previous council sessions that I've been in a party to, a frustration that we get these mandates without any funding to pay for these mandates, right? And so I understand that it's to the common good. It's And so, I understand that it's to the common good, it's to the societal good to try to protect the waterways. But it would seem to me that if we're going to get these mandates that actually cover an area that's wider than us, right, the water that we're protecting is going to be helping people downstream from us, it would be good if Oregon, the EPA, DEQ, as they're providing these mandates, would consider looking into helping fund the requirements that they're putting on us.
So, the conversation around unfunded mandates, it has been around as long as I have been doing this work. DEQ, and I don't, I'm not speaking for DEQ, so that's something you have to take up with them. They consider the programs that are in place for communities to utilize as a source of funding. The Clean Water State Revolving Fund is one that a lot of communities have taken advantage of. So in Section 13.7 in the Water Quality Management Plan of this huge document, there's a page and a half of different grants and low-interest loans and that type of thing that are available to communities. And they're saying, go out and use these.
Understood. I hope we're tapping into that. And I guess then, at this point, I need to say my apologies because I came in late and I just assumed you were speaking on behalf, you might have been connected to DEQ. So I thought I was actually making a case that, as it turns out, I should not be even bothering to make. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go over to my right, Counselor Manke.
Well, picking up where Counselor Chenoweth left off, there is some discussion about that possible stormwater fee or something like that coming down the road.
Well, that's what DEQ would like to see. All the legal, or all the language that is in the plan, which is what I have responded to, says that the designated management agency has to come up with a funding source. So, most of the agencies I've worked with started with it being funded in wastewater and working towards a stormwater fee.
So to just be kind of a crabby person, I...
Ms. Manke?
Obviously, not all of this...
Can you talk into your microphone, please?
I'm so sorry. Not all of this mercury came from Oregon. What about the people that are generating the mercury, or how are they providing funding for some of this, too?
No. I mean, frankly, it comes, you know, from overseas, and if, the way that it's viewed is, if it falls on your land, you're responsible for keeping it out of the waterways. I can't give you a better answer than that.
Well, as we go along, there's a number of things that you brought up that, I mean, I wash my paintbrushes in regular water and I suspect somewhere or another it goes down the drain. So, how will that, will we get special instructions for this sort of thing?
Yes.
And when will that happen?
Well, that's what the matrix spells out, is...
Is that what we'll have to determine by December 31st?
Yes. No, it's already been developed. You'll just have to...
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't look at the matrix as closely as I probably should have.
Yeah, so when you do, you want to look at the column that says Management Strategies. I think it's the third column over. Those are the, those are the real things that you're going to be doing, and then there's a timeline in there as well. Some of them you won't have to have completed right away.
Okay, well...
Thank you. Counselor Payne?
One point of clarification on that, when you're washing your paintbrushes in your sink and deep sinks, and that's going to the wastewater plant, so that's completely separate.
Yeah.
That's something that we will be addressing down...
But sometimes we do it out on the yard, so...
Don't do that anymore, Counselor.
I'll not do that anymore.
Counselor Payne?
I feel a little bad that I've been your chair, that we traded. Do you want to ask first?
No, no.
Okay. I do have three questions. My first is, has the deconstruction of the Newburgh Paper Mill impacted the mercury content of the Willamette? And, I guess, yeah, that's it.
I don't know.
Do you have other questions, Counselor?
I do. What is the TMDL now?
The numeric for it?
So what are our levels now and what's the target?
So, so the target is a 75% reduction. At the level of Minnville, you're not ever going to look at numbers, and there's a reason for that. You're going to leave monitoring to the big guys in DEQ. So what you're, what you're basically tasked with in this is just making sure that you keep everything on site and that you're doing the best that you can. I, the numerics are in a, in a big scientific study that's in the Water Quality, or, I'm sorry, the 2019 TMDL for the Willamette. And, you know, if you can read through that and understand it, then you have a much better grasp on science than I do.
Thank you. I have one more question. Does allowing the development of wetlands or flood-type areas increase the likelihood of mercury entering the waterways?
No. It would decrease it.
Yep. Counselor Peralta, please.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for your, for your work on this and for the information. So I just want to kind of make sure I understand our facts. So, the state adopted basically a regional basin mercury plan and a regional plan for fecal matter, water temperatures, and so on. And over time, they are requiring more and more cities to become part of that as they kind of have rolled it out over a period of years. Is that basically what we're, we're now moving into sort of our implementation period? And so my question is, is, I think that's the accurate, and so my question is, we're on the hook in this five-year period for mercury, but is there potential for us to be on the hook for temperature and fecal matter and other things that are currently being regulated? And the second question I have is, have we looked into a partnership with other jurisdictions that are part of the same waterway to do kind of a combined effort? And the reason I ask that is the Mid-Willamette Valley Council of Governments was what originated Willamette River Keepers when Salem was given these same, Salem and other communities in Marion County was given these same requirements to meet. So, I guess my question is, is that type of regional solution our next step? And then what other kinds of things are we likely to be asked to regulate in the next five-year period or whatever?
These are all really good questions. I want to clarify really quickly, just to make it clear. Leland was right. The original Willamette Basin TMDL was established in 2006. And it included mercury, temperature, and bacteria. And they said, what happens is DEQ is required to go out and find priority waterways that have issues, and that's why the Willamette was chosen. At the time, or DEQ develops all the science and the background for it, and they say, here's, here's our scientific study. Can we move forward with the Water Quality Management Plan? And, you know, this is what we plan. They send that to EPA. EPA blesses it and sends it back to DEQ as an order, and that's when they go out and pick designated management areas. So, the first Willamette Basin TMDL included direct dischargers that were right along the Willamette. And they had said, well, we have a numeric for mercury, but we need more work on this, and we will come back to you with a total waste load reduction number. That's a 75%. And so that's where this revised mercury came from, is DEQ did the work, they went back to the EPA, they said, here's our final number, and so here we are. Yes, you're, you're more than likely to have other parameters as, as the reach continues to expand, to include others, to meet those goals. And it would make sense to me that bacteria is so common and temperature is a problem everywhere. And although it's not a stormwater pollutant, it has to do with riparian condition, basically. So, it's a matter of time, but I can't tell you when that will be. What I, what I anticipate that may happen is you're getting big enough that DEQ may at some point say, well, you need to have a Phase 2 permit, like some of those other municipalities I mentioned. And I think they're kind of on the cusp of doing that.
For McMinnville?
Yeah. Well, and it will be other agencies as well. But the good thing is, is you have a lot of communities that have followed this same path. And in the plan that I developed for you and with staff will translate beautifully into the same program for your, your stormwater Phase 2 permit. So, the best management practices in this will apply to a Phase 2 permit, and then you'll just have an integrated program, and you'll have one report that covers two programs.
Can I, can I ask another question there? Okay. So, so Phase 2 you're describing, that's temperature and non-mercury and other things, right?
No, Phase 2 is, is smaller in population in an urban area.
So that, that gets me to the first question I had. So basically, what you're describing is that, if I heard you right, EPA came up with this set of rules for Oregon waterways. State of Oregon put together a plan to deal with, to implement those rules. They did implement the rules. They got initial pass, get the direct dischargers, did whatever changes they could, came back, reevaluated the progress that they made, and then, in order to get more progress, then they're going down to sort of the next set of opportunities, I guess. And we're just, we happen to be in that category.
Yeah, generally speaking, yes. DEQ looked at the Yam Hill and said, oh, there's a lot of communities on this waterway. If we reduce pollutants on the Yam Hill, that's going to impact the Willamette.
And can you sort of re-describe what you shared about, you know, I used the example of the Willamette River Keepers and the requirements that were there? And I, and I asked the question, you know, are we looking at some type of similar model or potential for a similar model here on the South Yam Hill River and in this area? And so, I guess I'll just repeat the question.
I remember now, I can't, go ahead.
I mean, so that was the main question. Do you, do you see that as a model that we would be looking to adopt, or would that be something that you'd recommend? Or is this more of a city-by-city thing that we just have to meet these obligations and that's all we need to do?
You're going to have to determine what's best for McMinnville. In my experience, partnerships are always the best way to go. Many voices, one goal, and, you know, a lot of input from a lot of different parties. And there are opportunities for partnerships with some of the other smaller communities around here. When it comes down to the way that, to management practices, it might not be cost-effective, and it may not be as beneficial for you all to have the same program. For communities that are falling behind, it's good for them to partner up with a larger agency who will help them out. But in your area, I don't see that as being the case. McMinnville is sort of at the top of the pyramid, and other communities will be looking to you for what you're doing. But I don't discount partnerships. I'm just saying, it's, you're going to have to, and you're going to have to evaluate, and you'll have, you'll have time to do that. But I do encourage you to, to start the conversation with some of the other agencies that have been tasked with this, and what they're doing and how they're doing it.
And I might add that we have reached out to Yam Hill County, like we talked about the other day, and so that's one possibility. I think combining efforts on some of the public outreach could help, education, the classroom, you know, visits, that sort of thing could...
Absolutely.
But, yeah, we're just starting that effort.
Yeah, sharing resources where you can is wonderful. And in Marion County, we use the county, Kaiser, Salem, Albany, Corvallis, and developed an education group. And so anytime anybody developed a message, we all shared it as part of the group, so it's good.
Mr. Towery?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just expand on that a little bit. I think Mary's done a great job laying it out. We will have a permit from DEQ, and DEQ will look to the city of McMinnville as the permit holder to be responsible to meet the standards in that permit. The way we do it could rely on partnerships and collaborations and regional efforts to do certain things. I think education outreach is a great example. We may also, you know, want to consider similar development standards. As an example, in the, in the Eugene-Springfield area, Eugene-Springfield and Lane County inside the urban growth boundary, all have the same development standards as, as it's related to stormwater. So developers meet one standard, it meets all the jurisdictions' permit requirements, but there's still the individual obligation that we have as a permit holder. So I, it's, I think it's a blend of some of the things that Counselor Peralta is talking about. And then just to emphasize a couple of the issues that, that came up earlier, I'm old enough to remember when DEQ used to pay for 75% all wastewater treatment plant improvements. In fact, when I was in Kous Bay, Kous Bay was the last organization to get 75% money. The max is 25%, and most people get less than that now. So, there used to be a lot of federal money coming through the state that helped jurisdictions comply with these kind of requirements. And then the last thing I'll say, and we might turn to Leland for sort of coloring in the picture a little bit more, TMDL is generic to a lot of different things. We have TMDLs already in our wastewater discharge permit, and I don't, I'm not, I'm going to ask Leland if he knows how many of them there are, but, you know, it may be mercury, it may be phosphorus, it may be bacteria, it may be temperature, it may be fill-in-the-blanks. So you could have two or five or 20 TMDLs that you have to address in the course of a particular permit, whether it's wastewater or stormwater, and likely those will evolve and grow over time as opposed to shrink over time. So, it, it does set in motion what Counselor Manke alluded to, that, that this work really lays the foundation... foundation to create a stormwater utility for the city of McMinnville, much like we have had wastewater utility for many years, which is also driven by our DEQ permit, driven by the TMDLs related to wastewater. So it's a new thing for us in the context of wastewater. It feels really familiar because, I'm sorry, in terms of stormwater, but it also feels really familiar because we've been doing it for decades with respect to wastewater. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to finish, Council questions. I do have one counselor on Zoom. Is there something you wanted to add in right now, Mr. Koster?
Yes, I was just going to add in reference to the wastewater. The mercury minimization plan will become part of a much larger mercury issue for the wastewater treatment facility as well. The new permits that are coming out presently for wastewater plants, which ours is on schedule for 2023 to start, we're actually already under mandate from DEQ to start sampling for copper, BLM, and also some different toxics that we have to do for our new permit. So it is presently being worked on. Mercury will be an issue going forward. Temperature will be an issue going forward. We will have a copper limit, and we will have an aluminum limit that's going to be in our new permit. And with this mercury, and for the permit wastewater side, we will have what's called a mercury minimization plan. And part of that mercury minimization plan includes the TMDL work that we're doing right now. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Council President Garvin, did you have any questions?
I don't know if there are really questions more than, well, I guess they're kind of questions. From listening to the conversation tonight, thank you for the data you provided, but it seems like there's no real quantifiable number that we as council can monitor. It's basically just up to DEQ and the EPA to tell us if we're meeting it or we're not meeting it. Is that accurate, or did I mishear something?
Let me clarify that a little bit. The 75% reduction that I'm talking about is what is expected of all the TMDL agencies. So it's not McMinnville reducing 75%. It's, that's the target that the TMDL program as a whole is supposed to reach. The reason that you want to shy away from monitoring for stormwater, not, this is different than wastewater, is that if you go out and sample, you're obligated to provide those numbers to DEQ. If you take a grab sample that's downstream of an outfall, and there's been construction work where they piled dirt in the street in a huge rainstorm, and an outhouse tipped over, and you have a big flush, well, you're just going out to monitor, and you capture it, and all your numbers are way up here, and you don't know where they came from. And now you have to give those numbers to DEQ. And they're going to say, what are you doing? So every agency that is, has a Phase II permit or TMDL does not do monitoring, you are not required to do monitoring.
So that relates to, Counselor, or Council President, do you have additional questions?
My additional question to follow up to that was if there's been any monitoring by DEQ or EPA of direct dischargers off of the Yam Hill before they approached this kind of runoff approach, like Riverbend, or the Steel Mill, or I'm sure there's various others throughout the South Yam Hill that discharge directly, but I'm not that well-versed in discharge permits.
There is a link that I'll get to, Anne, excuse me, that will give you a monthly update of dischargers that DEQ has nabbed, if you will, and the fines that were assessed. And it gives you a really good idea of, and they send this out once a month, and you'll have an idea of who's offending and what DEQ is writing fines for. But in general, if the industry is within your city, then you're responsible, the city is responsible for making sure that that agency or that business does not discharge.
Okay. That makes sense. Yeah, I mean, I get the need for clean water for the salmon, and not just them, but, you know, for citizens as well. We have some nice old water rights retained by Mack Water and Light, as well as other municipalities that pull water from the Willamette. Currently, even though we have a great watershed for today, eventually we will be as well. The cleaner that input, the less work you got to do for the output. But at the surface level, it just kind of seems like they're blanketing us with this regulation with no way to fund it, and there's just kind of an unknown, like take us at our word that you're actually reducing your TMDL. So that's concerning to me, but I don't know the way to work around that or not partake in this. But it just seems like there should be more tangible goals if this is a path we're going to go down. But that's just personal comment. So happy to work through that with other counselors and get us on a plan by the 31st of December, but those are just concerns I have and thoughts.
One final comment along those lines is that, and it's an important one, is that DEQ is not really likely to, they're not going to measure what your contribution is. But they're going to look at your annual reporting, and they're going to say, oh, well, they're implementing their program, they're demonstrating progress, they're doing what they're supposed to do. Keep going. If you are sending them an annual report that says, oh, we didn't get to it, we didn't do this, we didn't do that, then you're not meeting your obligations, and you're not demonstrating progress. So demonstrating progress is what they will give back to you.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you. I have some, a couple of questions that are continuation, kind of in the same vein. I just want to make sure my understanding's clear. We read some about, we're having this conversation about testing, but then it also seems that the implementation is on population size. I just want to make sure I'm really clear on what the, what the triggers are for programming, and if you could just touch on that one more time.
Yeah, the population had to do, has to do with if you're actually at a Phase II level. But for the TMDL, it applies to everybody. So as far as I know, in Yam Hill County, every city had to have a TMDL implementation plan, unless they went to DEQ and said, we only have 50 people, this is not reasonable, and got a waiver. But, I mean, the smallest, the smallest of communities are required to do this.
So the testing that's happening is happening in the Willamette, and then everything that's flowing to the Willamette, that this is where the planning comes in. So there's no testing that's happening, and you're discouraging us from doing independent testing, but there's no testing that's happening as our storm drains are evacuating into the Yam Hill that is a precursor for this?
I just, what DEQ does is they take their data and the data from the larger agencies, and they use that to establish the numerical standards for the Willamette. And I don't, I can't answer the question of what testing is being done where on the Yam Hill. There's probably volunteer testing that's going on, and that is given to DEQ. But again, testing can be, if you've got a high number and you can't explain it, then you're stuck with that high number. And so if you, if you say, well, our starting point is 95, or our starting point is 75, and you go out and you take a sample and it's 95, they say to you, the city of McMinnville, you're responsible for this. The whole, you know, the city organization is responsible. And the ability for you to find the offender can be very, very difficult.
Sure.
So it's just a mixed bag.
Okay. Are there other follow-up questions from any members of council? Any questions of staff or any additional information?
I can't think of anything, other than we'll be back to finalize the plan and have a resolution for adoption before the end of the year. And if you have any comments about the plan, please let me know ASAP, so we can incorporate them before we submit it on September 3rd.
Thank you. I do have a follow-up question from Counselor Menke.
I'm just curious, is, are the people that, are the businesses that potentially could be polluters in this situation, are they subject to, like, credits for, I mean, can they trade and get excused if they buy certain credits and things like that, for those that are cleaner users? And how does that enter into it, if at all?
A stormwater credit is what you're talking about.
Right.
So I, municipalities, that's a choice the municipality would have to make. There are some that are really opposed to it, and I would be one of those.
Yeah, I can see where it could really mess you up.
We all use streets, we all support businesses that have parking lots, so on and so forth. So, you know, but, but a lot of municipalities do. So there's, there's an opportunity for you to shape your program the way you want.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Towery?
So I think that's a, that's a great example of one of the kinds of policy choices that will be presented to you to consider as we move through this process. Most communities with a stormwater permit create a utility. They typically have some sort of a fee that's often based on the impervious surface that exists on a typical development. Many of them establish systems development charges to help build capital resources for the stormwater system. And depending on how developers address or mitigate stormwater on their properties, some folks can get credits for some of those fees. And so each of those systems is really designed at the local level with sort of local values and goals in mind, and will present you with those policy choices and policy options as we move through the debate and discussion about those various, both capital-intensive and sort of labor-intensive programs that we would choose to implement as a community, and how we would choose to fund them.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation today and for your time answering all of our questions. Thank you. Thank you for the thorough report, and for everybody for being here. And the work session is concluded at 6:36. We'll take a break and start the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.[1486.48]
Everybody could find their seats, please.
Recording in progress.
We are, we are attempting to set a record for the shortest McMinnville City Council meeting ever, so we do want to be ready. Counselor Peralta, I was going to ask you to say the pledge, but if you're not out here, you'll lose the privilege today. We will wait for the seven o'clock start, of course, as our meeting was noticed. You're very, this is very unusual. We have an exceptionally short agenda tonight. Welcome, thanks for joining us. I'm assuming you're here for the agenda item and...
Not to object.
Not to object, noted. You might want to stay standing, Counselor.
Am I doing the pledge?
Yes, sir. Good evening. It is now seven o'clock, and I will call to order the regular meeting of the August ninth, 2022 McMinnville City Council meeting. Like to ask, I'd like to ask Claudia to do a roll call. Sorry, everyone. I'd like to ask Claudia to do a roll call.
Counselor Minkie?
Present.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Here and accounted for.
Counselor Payne?
Here.
Counselor Peralta?
Present.
Counselor President Garvin?
He is here on Zoom. Counselor Giri is absent this evening, and interim Mayor Drabkin.
Here. And if I could ask Counselor Peralta to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Counselor. We'll now take comments from community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom to request to speak. Once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic, or you may send a chat directly to city recorder Claudia Sisneros, and we will announce you. Are there any public comments? Anybody signed up for public comment this evening?
None.
Anybody in the gallery that would like to provide any public comment this evening? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to provide any public comment this evening? Is there anybody on the telephone? No one. Thank you. We'll now have a public hearing regarding vacating an alleyway at the block of Northeast 8th Street and Northeast 9th Avenue on Northeast Alpine Avenue and Northeast Lafayette Avenue, RV 1-22. Is, does any counselor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this street vacation? I'd like to now call on our Public Works Director Anne Pagano to present.
Thank you, Mayor Drabkin. I will note that the staff report for this item begins on page 50, if you want to flip to that. As the mayor noted, this is the public hearing to consider a vacation of an alleyway between 8th and 9th Streets and Lafayette and Alpine, as shown in the exhibit in the packet. The city has received a complete vacation application from VVC Investment Fund, LLC, that included the required signatures from all adjacent property owners and the signatures from 20 of the 28 affected property owners, meeting the two-thirds requirement per state statute. At the June 28th council meeting, Resolution Number 2022-45 was adopted, initiating proceedings and setting today August 9th at 7:00 PM as the date and time for a public hearing to consider vacating the area. A notice was published in the News Register the week of July 25th and August 1st, and notice was posted with a sign titled "Notice of Street Vacation at the Ends of the Vacation Area," notifying interested parties of the hearing. Notice was also sent to all potentially affected utilities and other city staff members for review. There are no known utilities in the area to be vacated. McMinnville Water and Light, the city's planning department, and the fire department did not have any comments. No other comments or objections to the proposed vacation have been received. So I would ask the city council to conduct the public hearing and ask for any public testimony, and then considering any testimony, staff would recommend that the council consider the adoption of ordinance number 5120, which is in your packet this evening. With that, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any council questions for Director Pagano at this time? Counselor Chenoweth.
I don't actually have a question for Director...
Pagano.
Thank you. I, I'm always stuck between Pajano and Pagano. But I do have a process question for Jeff. This has happened multiple times. Is there a reason why we can't have the public hearing close and immediately go to the ordinance, rather than having a gap between the two? And that's my only question.
It, it's really up to the council in terms of how you want to proceed. Oftentimes, there are... Typically, we have an interest in having public hearings relatively early in the meeting to give people the opportunity to engage and maybe not stay for the rest of business. Tonight's an unusual circumstance. We really only have one action item. If you want to move items around, it's at your prerogative, for sure. Historically, there are times when you may have multiple public hearings and multiple items, but you want to get the public hearing kind of out of the way and give people the opportunity to engage, and you still have to work your way through several items of business. It's really up to the council ultimately in terms of how you want to structure the agenda.
So I guess my thought is, is it just if you have somebody like, in, in this case, it was a light meeting, so it really doesn't matter. But in a case where you've had, we've got a lot of stuff on it, if, if they stay together, then the people that have come for that public hearing were immediately deliberating afterwards, they're hearing the entire conversation, and then they can leave, rather than having to sit through a ton of other action items that we may have. So I'm just, to this, today, it's probably not a big deal. This may not be the perfect time to bring this up, but I've been wanting to bring this up as, as something you guys could potentially discuss about the way we're ordering, to bring that together, so it's, each item is, is, is one ball before we go to the next item.
All right. Thank you for the, thank you for that. Are there any questions for Director Pagano related to the public hearing? Now, seeing any, I'll now open the public hearing for comments. The public hearing's now open, and I'd like to call on Claudia Sisneros to call on those who have signed up to provide comments.
No one has signed up for public comment.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the gallery that would like to provide public comment on this hearing? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to provide public comment on this hearing? And I am assuming we still have no one on the phone.
We have one person on the phone.
Would anybody on the phone like to provide public comment on this hearing? Okay. I'm now going to close the public hearing. And we will now go into reports from counselors on committee and board assignments. I'll start at my right and move around the room, ending with our council president, so Counselor Peralta, if you'll begin, please.
Thank you, Mayor Drabkin. Just one brief item to report for the Mid-Millamette Valley Council of Governments. We had our first gathering of elected officials today at the Spirit Mountain Casino. It was hosted by the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron. I think we had probably 80 local, state, and federal elected officials there, so it was pretty well attended, and we, I think, did a pretty good job of getting some of the regional concerns out to policymakers about housing and homelessness and so on. So, good meeting.
Thank you. Counselor Payne.
The Audit Committee hasn't met yet, and the Landscape Review Committee meeting is next Wednesday, so nothing to report.
Thank you. Counselor Minkie.
I really don't have anything to report tonight, sorry.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Chenoweth.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. And Council President Garvin.
As you guys will see in your email next week, we have a messaging meeting, if, if you want to attend that. It's via Zoom or in-person, related to fire district stuff. Off the top of my head, I believe that's the 15th here at Civic Hall.
16th.
16th Civic Hall. And then airport stuff, we're in the final drafts of our minimum standards. YCOM meeting was canceled today. And yesterday, I attended the manufacturing bus tour roadshow that OBI and OBC are putting on, and that was informative to tour the steel mill and ADEC and kind of the struggles they face in manufacturing in Oregon. So if you guys get an invite to that next year, I would definitely encourage you to attend.
Thank you, Council President. I'll report on the McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission meeting from July 27th. First, we heard agency reports, including from YCAP, who's running a couple programs, one of which is Project Turnkey. There are currently 66 enrolled, and in the last quarter, that program saw a 73% positive exit, so 73% exit to permanent housing, which is, in the world of housing, an exceptionally high success rate. And they have a desire to start transitioning this to more permanent programming, and they will need proof of more long-term funding in order to start putting those pieces together. The Navigation Center, which we should start calling Any Door Place, because that is its, that is its name and might help with confusion down the road. The Any Door Place is still in process, but is, the, the timeline on that does keep getting pushed out, and a lot of that is just due to the current construction market. There are three components to Any Door Place, so it is a low-barrier overnight shelter. They do have service providers and offices and hubs in there as wraparound spaces, and then they do provide a community space, and it will be open daily. In addition to that, they're working on opening a youth outreach drop-in center in McMinnville. Encompass Yamhill Valley continues to run a cooling shelter program through the county. They've been putting out a lot of information on that, both in Spanish and English, and I know our, our city socials have been helping to share that information as well, and there's a number of city participants in that program. And, uh, let's see. And, um, and they've also have received some grants from HHS and United Way, and they're starting to expand their paid positions. In terms of Habitat for Humanity, they have a build that should be complete by this fall that'll be housing a family of six, and they'll be starting on a common wall build also over in Aspire. They've received some ARPA monies to help with things, but one of the things that they have coming up is that they have a, a park built in, built, designed into the Aspire development that's about of a third of an acre, and have about 4,500 square feet dedicated for play equipment, and they'll, would appreciate finding partnership on putting in that, that playground. And then we heard a presentation from Diane Lin at Proud Ground, who has been running a regional county land trust for 22 years, and so we started learning about those types of programmings. And, um, that's the, that is my update on housing. We'll now go to department heads for reports, starting with our city manager, Jeff Towery.
Thank you, Mayor. In the interest of the mayor's stated goal tonight, just one brief item to report. Next Thursday, the 18th of August, the City of Dayton will be hosting the Yamhill City County Dinner, reestablishing a tradition that's been on hiatus for almost two and a half years, and I hope some of you are able to attend. That's all I have to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Pagano?
Nothing new to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Chiefs?
Mayor and council, the, today we had the final meeting with the airshow staff, closing out the contract, receiving all of the required documents and permits. That finished with the contract requirement for the airshow to start this next weekend, 19, 20, 21. Thunderbirds will be here, and we'll be ready, ready to move forward with it.
Thank you. Chief Scales?
Hey, thank you, Mayor and council members. Just a couple of quick things. Hopefully, they're brief. Just a quick thank you for the city council and mayor for your outreach to our office and our officers after the incident up on Mount Mazam and the shooting. Much appreciated. Everybody's doing as well as can be expected, continued support through our peer support program and other types of internal services and external services that we offer to our staff. A quick update, again, some new, newsworthy stuff. The abatement of the camp that we've talked about, all went well last Thursday and Friday. Notices were given Sunday, Monday this week for the vehicles that we've discussed that will take place at the end of this week. That abatement will take place with services being offered and reference, or resources being offered to those that are out there. Really, I will tell you, I know Counselor Peralta and I had a sidebar. There's been zero pushback or zero negative feedback that I've received. Instead, it's been very positive with the movement in this direction, so good to go there. A couple of internal things. Internal promotion process for our vacant captains will open this Friday. I'm excited to fill that. Anticipated fill date will be September 6th, and we've got, I know somebody or some people that are really qualified for that position. Two unconditional job offers that went out yesterday, and they were accepted. Anticipate them coming onboard September, an academy date into February. That's how far they're pushed back into people in backgrounds right now. I will tell you that I will be out of the office all of next week, so Captain Tim Simons will be the point of contact for the PD. Thanks.
Thank you. City Recorder Claudia Sisneros?
Yeah, just to follow up to what Mr. Towery said, if you are interested in attending the city-county dinner, please let me know by Friday so I can RSVP you. And that is all.
Thank you. And I don't see any department heads on the line, but I, this one telephone number that's on here could be a department head? No? It's not? Okay. Thank you very much. We're now going to consider the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance number 5120, an ordinance vacating an alleyway at the block of Northeast 8th Street and Northeast 9th Avenue, Northeast Alpine Avenue, and Northeast Lafayette Avenue, RV 1-22. Does any counselor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this ordinance? We'll now consider the matter of ordinance number 5120. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Will the city manager please read the ordinance by title only?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5120, an ordinance vacating an alleyway at the block Northeast 8th Street and Northeast 9th Avenue, Northeast Alpine Avenue, and Northeast Lafayette Avenue, RV 1-22.
Thank you. Does our Public Works Director Anne Pagano have anything to add to the presentation?
I don't have any further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now open this for council discussion. Looking first to my left, anything down on this end? No, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on 5120.
Please.
Second.
Would that be a motion to pass, Counselor Peralta?
Motion to move it on first vote, yeah.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so I have a motion from Counselor Peralta and a second from Counselor Minkie. I'll ask for those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously. Ordinance number 5120 passes on its first reading unanimously. I will now ask the city manager to read the ordinance again by title only.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading of ordinance number 5120, an ordinance vacating an alleyway at the block Northeast 8th Street and Northeast 9th Avenue, Northeast Alpine Avenue, and Northeast Lafayette Avenue, RV 1-22.
Thank you. I'll now ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5120.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Chenoweth and a second from Counselor Peralta. All those, and I would like to ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Minkie.
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Aye.
Counselor Payne.
Aye.
Counselor Peralta.
Aye.
And Council President Garvin.
Aye.
The ordinance number 5112 is adopted by a vote of five to zero, and I will now adjourn the city council meeting at 7:18 PM.